From our January twenty-second meeting. Does anybody have any additions or comments for those minutes? We have a motion to-
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from January's twenty-second, two thousand nineteen.
And the second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, LaShaw, we're ready for your report.
Since your last meeting, we've had a few council meetings. In our February meeting, we adopted the downtown strategic plan that we have been working on for the last few months. And some of you have been involved in that. Jeff actually is sitting on a steering committee now, and we appreciate that. So we'll be, we are working through our budget process right now and trying to add in as many of those items that were outcome from the strategic plan. And we look forward to instituting some of those ideas. At our March meeting, we had a presentation by our utility engineer, GHD Incorporated. They've been our engineers for a number of years. Really looking at the next twenty years of growth, we've been working on a water and a sewer study. We know that we need to immediately be working toward an expansion of a wastewater treatment plant to be able to accommodate that growth for the next twenty years. And we are, we have pretty much, well, probably about eighty percent design complete with that. We've been working on that for a long time. We do need to move forward with that. And then we also need a new water storage tank and a new well to accommodate that new growth. And one of the items we introduced at our last meeting was to increase our water impact fee, which is just the fee that's paid by any new development for the new water or sewage capacity. They pay an impact fee so that those structures that are needed to accommodate the growth, such as a new well, water tower, are paid for by the new growth, not the existing residents. So we are, we'll be holding a public hearing at our next meeting regarding that impact fee, which was, that ordinance was introduced at our April meeting. We also, I give a report on the update of a traffic signal warrant analysis that we did at the Clark's Rest and Route Five intersection. And that was a cooperative effort between Marv, the town, and the owner of the Tudor Hall property. State Highway had said that if we would do an updated traffic study, if we can at least meet one warrant, then that we would work with them to try to get a signal put in while they're there during the Route Five widening instead of coming back at a later date. So in phase three, Clark's Rest will have the connection to Leonard's Grant. So we, because they're working on phase three, we were able to estimate what that traffic is going to increase through, to get to that light. And so we were able to add those numbers in, and we did meet two warrants. So we've submitted that to State Highway, and we're waiting to hear back from them.
Okay, thank you. Under new business, our first case is number fourteen dash zero five dot five. Leonard Town Self-Storage at two five eight five oh Point Lookout Road, Clark's Rest. Jada?
Yes, so the Clark's Rest subdivision is a PUD, and it received its final approval back in February of two thousand and twelve. At that time, the project also included commercial spaces right there on Route Five. And I did include those minutes in your package to review. Today, the applicant is requesting recommendation to Town Council for final site plan approval for a ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-two square foot self-storage facility. The plan shows that the facility will consist of one three-story building with an office and a second one-story building, as well as a paved boat and RV storage area. Due to the location of the facility right on Route Five and with the abutting Clark's Rest neighborhood, staff did request additional buffering on all sides of the facility and a little bit of additional lighting in the RV boat storage area. The developer agreed to that and did include that on the site plan that you have in front of you. There's also on the site plan an additional thirty-six thousand square foot area that is set aside in the northeast corner. That's for future expansion if it's needed. The required parking, we didn't really have anything in our ordinance, so we had to do a little bit of research. We went off the county's parking requirements. The county only requires that parking be provided for employees. So with two employees, they would only be required two parking spaces. However, they did go ahead and provide six in front of the office area. To date, they have received their soil conservation, public works, state highway, and utility approvals. Prior to the issuance of the building permit, the fire marshal will review and approve the plans. At the time of the printing of the staff report, it did say that we're requiring something in writing from MDE to allow the placement of the water lines to go under the wetland area. I did receive that approval today. That's all I have.
Okay.
And Rick Bailey is here to answer any questions that you may have of him.
Did you have anything you wanted to present first?
The only comment I'd make is a project is, that you heard from Jada, that it's the commercial component from the PUD for the Clark's Rest project itself. It's a project myself, Marv, and Hessler, and Jay Webster. During the course of the development of Clark's Rest, which has been ongoing for a number of years now, we investigated a number of possible uses for the commercial site. We came back to the idea that this was the best use for it for several reasons. It's a very low traffic generator in terms of the traffic off of Route Five and adjacent to the surrounding areas and so forth to it. It's a good compatible use with residential and other commercial uses within the area. And it generates very low noise, things of that nature too, at the same time. The other uses which we had investigated and the ones that had approached us as possible uses for it were things like a dollar store, discount grocery stores, things of this nature, maybe even a gas facility. We felt they would be less compatible with the community, and that's one reason we came back to this as a potential use for the site at the same time. I just want to give you the background in terms where we were going with it and why we settled on it. In terms of the design, we're going with a three-story structure. It's under the height limitation of the town ordinance for town of Leonard Town. We feel will be very attractive architecturally, probably the masonry product building in terms of a long duration, in terms of the exterior materials, masonry. And there will be some synthetic stucco drabbing on it for trim features and things like that to provide some accent colors at the same time too. That's the background of where we're coming at from it. And I'd be glad to offer any questions, and we certainly agree to all the approval conditions which were mentioned earlier at the same time.
This isn't really a public hearing today, but there were comments that were put on the Leonard Town Facebook page. I don't know if you saw them or not. Some of them didn't want to see that huge of a building out front. Others agreed with your reasoning that it would be a, a nice quiet place to be. Another comment was that they didn't know whether it really fit in with the winery and other things. But then a gas station and a dollar store wouldn't either, so I'm not sure.
I would just say that commercial highway is our most intense commercial use, and all of that area is commercial highway.
Right. My concern when I first saw it was how big it is. And I don't know, with the ninety-seven thousand added to the thirty-six, if you finish that. We had an ordinance for big boxes, but I can't remember what that-
It's retail, it's ten thousand square feet for retail.
Okay, for retail.
Retail floor, yeah, but this is not retail.
So I just think it looks so big to be there. It looks like it's just overwhelming. I don't know whether you, it has to be three stories to, to be profitable for you. The other thing is maybe there'd be some way that you could break it up so it doesn't look like one big monster building. We've done that in town with this, with, to some extent. I don't know if there's any way your architecture could do that.
Self-storage has evolved over a period of time. If you stop and think about it, it used to be individual warehouses and type of buildings and so forth. But the industry's moved to structures such as this currently for two reasons. It's predominantly entirely climate-controlled for two reasons. One, that's where the consumers want, because if you're going to put things in storage, you want good humidification control and that type of thing to protect the value of your properties. That's a reason you're seeing more and more structures of this height wherever you go, particularly in the state of Maryland. The second reason is the state has now mandated a requirement that you must fire protect them with sprinklers. And the problem of it is if you break your buildings up, then you have a problem. How do you individually control them within your separate fire systems and so forth? That's a reason the whole industry has moved to buildings of, I agree, it's a good-sized building, but you need that for economies of scale to make it work versus spreading it out with a lot of individual components.
That wasn't really my point, though. I mean, I'm not against the building on the inside being that big. I would just like it on the outside, if there was something you could do to the architect to make it look like maybe it's a couple smaller buildings across the front. If you notice where the Drury Building is in town, you know, that, that was all one big front. But we asked them to break it down, so they broke it down into, I guess there's three, three or four. It looks like it's three or four buildings, but it's not. That's just the way they made the entrances and things, and that you wouldn't even have to have a real entrance going in all those places.
So in other words, if I understand, keeping the building size the same, but architect, I understand-
Yeah, just make it look smaller.
We'll be glad to go back. I can't promise exactly what we can do, but we'd be glad to investigate that.
But at least ask and see. But the other thing is, I know that there wasn't any requirement for parking spaces. But back to what you said, you know, they used to all be low shed buildings, and people, they opened the gate and people drove right up to their shed. So now they have to go inside. Where, where will these people park to bring things in and out of their units?
Could I approach you maybe?
Oh, yeah, come up here.
I didn't want to be presumptuous.
Oh, no. We're very informal here.
This is, you all may have additional-
We do.
... of this. And I'm, for purpose of illustration, I can't show everybody, but at least I can show you all at the same time. There will be loading docks on, on the side so that people come through the main gate. The main parking is for people who come to the office-
Right.
-to buy supplies, to pay bills, to, to enter into an agreement to rent a place or to maybe close their place out. But they will come through the gate, and there will be a loading dock area. You see this, this, that's an elevator. So they'll come, and this is cross-hatched here so that those areas will be, there will be some areas that could, may have direct access, but there will be loading docks and so forth that'll allow them to access to come into that at the same time.
Okay, okay.
If that helps answer that question.
It does.
I'll stay here in case you need any further questions, but be glad to answer anything you have.
I have the same question. How can you break it up? And looking at the very back, I mean, who lives in Clark's Rest?
I do.
Okay. Looking at the back, I don't know exactly how that's situated to your neighborhood, but is, what exactly do you plan for the buffer in the back of the building?
Using this as an example, this is all wetlands that wrap up through here, this area and so forth. Clark's Rest sits up higher, most of the homes and so forth do. But over a period of time, we visualize all this will be naturally revegetated and so forth to add some buffer planting and so forth to it too. But all of this will grow up and be naturally vegetated to be a natural buffer all the way around it at the same time too. Won't be from day one or naturally in landscaping, but over a period of time it will.
Yeah, because looking down on it, you would be able to see a three-story-
That's correct.
-building, and so if you make it look, you know, break it down from the outside, I don't know if you think about that from all of the aspects or not, how you do that.
Is that your concern, is the backside gene?
No, I was talking about the street side. I, because I'm, I was thinking when people enter Leonard Town, you know, what, what are they going to see? And I, I mean, those are very large letters that we see up there now. I don't know what kind of signage you were really-
Well, that's a whole different, I mean, to meet our regulations.
Right, so I mean, but-
So, I mean, if you just, if you look at the front of the building, it is kind of the, the, this front section sticks out like it's a separate building. There's a lot of relief there, and to me, it kind of looks like a, one of the modern town center kind of look.
Yeah, I think-
You almost feel like, on the front side, I think it does have a lot of that character that we look for.
Well, but it's just this part that I was concerned, you know, if this part right in here-
Okay.
-could be made to look like, I don't know how.
Like, look like another entrance or something, something as simple as that.
Either that or just something a little different, architectural differences in some, I'm not, I don't know how to do it.
If you change the color, that might help.
Well, the color's too red.
Make it invisible with-
That's probably not an accurate representation when you put something on here at the same time. I will say this, the architectural firm that we're working with, Butts and Wilburn, their primary, primary specialty is self-storage facilities. They tell me right now they have sixty-some under design across the entire country. So this is their specialty. So I'm assuming, I can't guarantee, but I'm assuming the things I go back to them with, if, if anybody has, has some creativity, I think they should be able to try to do it. And I'll see what they possibly can do at the same time too.
I, I think a good guideline to go by here is taking a look at this building, and since this necessarily isn't what it's exactly going to look like, if this were to be in the town square, would it fit in with the town square? I think that's probably a better way to put it, because we have buildings right here that we're used to. And maybe that might be a compromise right there, is to take that into consideration.
We kind of want to set that mood as people drive in.
A lot of the self-storage, if you drive across Maryland, a lot of them are metal panels, a lot of different things. So the direction we need-
That can't be helped, obviously.
And that wasn't, that, we weren't even going to suggest that, you know, even if that was economical. Then, so our direction to them was do something with primary masonry products that can at least give us a start to be able to come up with something that would be in keeping with the local area too.
I'm sure they can come up with something that's got some kind of more interesting aspect to make that be broken up a little bit.
I'll signify, can you judge?
Okay. Because I, I agree, it's a nice quiet business to have.
We gave a lot of thought to see what would be most compatible within the community and within Route Five at that location too.
And with the sign too, because it said twelve by six by two.
That was the monument sign out front. Yes, right. And that, again, will have to meet the town ordinance.
This doesn't approve, that we do sign permits separately and have to meet the criteria, so.
So that doesn't mean that they're necessarily be allowed to have a big, long name like that up on the top like that.
Exactly.
That was just put. Okay, any other-
It's basically a hundred square foot, so the, is what is allowed in our sign ordinances on commercial highway. So we'd have to look at that and see if it meets any.
Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. How about a recommendation for the council? Anybody ready to make that motion?
I can do it. I move to recommend the requested final site plan to the Town Council for final approval of the ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-two square foot self-storage facility for case number fourteen dash oh five point five.
I second the motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
The council will give you minutes, and so, you know, that will be part of it, your comments.
The next case is case number thirty-eight dash seventeen. Woodsview subdivision, map one twenty-one, parcel twenty-three on Greenbrier Road.
Okay, for this one, the applicant is requesting the approval of a three-lot subdivision. Town Council approved and allocated two additional EDUs for this subdivision at their meeting in April. The property currently contains a, a home on the proposed lot one of the subdivision. If the subdivisions approve, that existing house and the barn behind it will be demolished and replaced with a new single-family home. Each of the homes would be of modest size with a garage and a driveway. And I did today provide you with just a sample floor plan so you can see the approximate size of the houses. They are very modest. Greenbrier Road is a county road, so that's something that we need to keep in mind today. We did have the applicant reach out for, reach out to the Department of Public Works and Transportation just to make sure that there was capacity on that road for the additional two homes. And the county confirmed that the capacity was fine. The section of the road that these houses will be located is further down towards Hollywood Road. So it's, it's the actual widened paved section, not the section in the back that is gravel. So I think that that, that helps a little bit. The applicant will have to obtain the proper entrance permits through the county prior to us issuing any use and occupancies or anything like that. Today, to date, they have received their EDU allocation from Town Council. And again, prior to the issuance of any building permits, the utilities will be reviewed by town staff. And I have Ms. Amanda Wood here to answer any questions if you have any.
Does anybody have any questions, or do you have any comments that you wanted to make to start?
Sure, I have a few.
Okay.
My husband couldn't be here, he's so long his-
You can come on up here.
Okay, his job, sorry. He has the flag in his truck. You know, he had one job to do. It's his job.
I bet you'll do it better.
Yeah, yeah, so. So as Jada alluded to, we are looking for the three-lot approval. One is, has an existing home on it, it will be torn down. So the two lots would be in addition to, so that's a total of three. So improving the aesthetics of Greenbrier, you know, it's, it's a little messy coming in once it opens up past Smacko, two kind of dilapidated houses that need to come down. And replacing them, like also Jada alluded to, two modest, I'm sorry, three modest homes, roughly around two thousand square foot, twenty-three hundred with the garage. Not quite the larger family homes that you find out in Leonard Town with Clark's Rest, Kings Grant, and not quite the two fifty-ish condo-ish that they're building across in the field. Just getting more, keeping younger families in your community in Leonard Town. I would move here if my husband would let me live out of Mechanicsville. I would buy one of these houses or keep one for myself, but that's not going to happen. I love the community, keeping younger families here permanently as they, they grow into the town together. So there, there isn't a lot of options when it comes to those smaller homes unless you buy one of the older, more established homes in the city. But really, don't, don't come up often, people are lifers here with those sized homes. And they, they, it's either a condo or bigger homes. So we wanted to offer a few alternatives and keep with the, the towns and estates. It'd be very modern, very nice, very sleek. They're nice sized lots, nice sized properties, they'll have nice backyards.
It looks like from here that they would be a nice sized backyard for children.
They're going to be just shy of a half acre each.
Oh, wow.
These will be, these will be about sixty, seventy-five foot off of the, off of Greenbrier, the dwellings themselves, and you'll have a fifty, sixty-foot backyard. It's, they're going to be nice, nice sized lots, and they're all flat. You guys, I'm sure, are aware of the, the ground back there. But nice flat, nice family, family-oriented dwellings, so we're excited about the project. Adding two driveways and increasing the property value, if that was the only thing. Those two houses aren't doing anything for your community. It's, it's only going to help most people on that, that street. There is a gentleman right, right next to us who's building a house. And Singletary just finished that, end of that piece, but I don't think it gets counted in their, their property, their comps. So bringing newer houses to that neighborhood will only drive the market down for that area. That's all I have, do you have any questions?
I was wondering if that was going to be a house or whether that-
It is, so Singletary, it's Joanne Drive that comes to a dead end right at Greenbrier. That was the last house that was built in Singletary. And directly behind that house, which is not part of Singletary, a gentleman is building a house there. It's supposed to be a one hundred percent fully sustained home. They're using different types of materials. It's, it's actually-
Concrete walls.
Yeah, concrete walls and stuff like that. So the outside will look very aesthetically pleasing by the time it's finished. But that, the way they're building it with the concrete block walls and everything, the house will be one hundred percent sustained on its own, except for our water and sewer.
It's an interesting material he's using.
Yes.
I've never seen this material before.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's interesting looking.
He's very excited about it, so.
And it's huge.
What's his timeline?
Yeah, it is a good house. He's actually doing most of the work himself, so it'll probably be another year, year and a half before it's done. Yeah.
Well, I do agree with you that we need houses this size, because there are a lot of families that can't afford those great big houses, but definitely want to be in the Leonard Town area.
Back by Shepherd's Old Field on Longmore Street there, we have those five and fill lots, and those have sold really, really well. And a lot of those houses are flipping back there, being upgraded and sold. But it's become a really desirable area.
And they're about, what are they, about two thousand square feet?
Actually, the ones on Longmore are much smaller. They're, they're only about eleven hundred square feet. One of them's a little bit larger because it does have a base, a basement. But they're just small, two-bedroom, one-bath. They're very cute, he's done a great job. And like I said, they're-
Yeah, like you said, good starter homes.
Yes, they're great starter homes, and they're selling very quickly.
He's pulled his last permit of the five.
Yes, he has.
Yeah, we have a house the size of, like the Clarks run the, the, Leonard's Grant, and I wish we could rebuild two thousand square foot, it's just easier, one floor living. Very sought after, I mean, not just with new families, I mean, any, any walks of life, every generation. Every one of them's downsized, and I'm like, if I had my choice of one of the two, I'd go with the smaller one. Yeah, and hardly you can- Me too.
That's wisdom.
Yeah. Wisdom and a lot of weekend cleaning.
Right. Any other comments or questions?
Do you, what's the timeline on that?
For the three, about a year and a half, so we'll be finished our three before him. Before that gentleman does want. So we're averaging four to six months on a house, so it depends on weather, so it's all the goods. Year and a half and three.
All right, thanks.
Okay. Are we ready for a motion?
Got to make a motion for case number thirty-eight dash seventeen, the Woodsview subdivision.
Yes, we have a, we're-
Oh, you got some questions?
Oh, sorry about that. We're Greenbrier.
You can go first.
Okay.
My name is Lilac Coriel, and I live on Greenbrier Road. And my first question is, how much, how much size of this lot is going to be houses on?
They're going to be just shy of a half acre each.
But are you combining the two lots there?
No, the two, Mr. Curtis' lot, and then the lot that's much larger.
Okay. So what's the plans for Mr. Curtis?
We will eventually want to subdivide it into, it's a one-acre lot, that, so every lot will be a half acre.
So you want to put five new houses there?
Yes, ma'am, but that's not, that's, we're, not today.
That's not today, potentially.
But we knew that the same people owned Mr. Curtis', and so we felt there would be something. So I will tell you that I'm really object to having five new houses on that road. I see a lot of new faces here on this, and I don't know who's missing Heather, but you may not be familiar with Greenbrier Road. Has anybody been down to Greenbrier Road?
No.
So you all know, okay. So you know that it's a poor road, the county thinks it's okay, but it's not. The road itself has been very poor condition. And my main concern is safety, safety of people who live out on and walk on you, the Greenbrier Road. So the road, I've been there for twenty years. My knowledge, the road has never been paved. Every few years, they come in and they put down green chips down, and they spray all this stuff on it, and then they roll it out, and that's what we get. We have no sidewalks on Greenbrier, we have no curbs, we have no bike paths, we have no filters. What we have are ditches on either side of the road. Two normal-sized cars can just barely pass each other, so be careful. So I feel like, I would like to tell you a little bit about the traffic that goes on that road every day. Most people, there's like, say, twelve houses there, and each of them- Most people, there's like, say, twelve houses there, and each of them probably have two cars going in and out. Um, there are two town established utility places there, so first they monitor every day their trucks coming in and out, monitoring the water system. Um, there is a large utility building here for their cable TV, which is a major, um, part, I think it's their main, major, um, facility to provide all the cable and broadband or whatever the neighborhood that we stay. So they're there, and they, of course, their workers come in and out of it every day. So we have that much. So now, we have walkers, we have bicyclists, we have moms pushing the charges, and they're all coming up from Leonard's Grant. If you've been down to the end of Greenbrier, you'll see, turns to dirt, they come up there. Perfect shortcut for going to the library, to going to the supplemental center, to the playing fields, to play baseball, practice soccer, whatever it is. A lot of foot traffic, especially now that, you know, it's nice weather. So sometimes groups of kids come, they're all headed to wherever they're going, they, they fill up the whole road. So when a car comes, they scatter in each direction, so you're gonna have to stop in times like, you know, is everybody off the road before you can get by? My point is, there's a lot of traffic that does not belong to the residents that use that road, in addition to residents. So now, we're gonna have eventually five more houses, minimum two cars, that's ten more people. There are two houses being constructed right now, that's two, four more cars, so. And we have fourteen more cars going in and out every day, that is my, that's my, um, concern. We all know, the more of anything that you get in the mix, more cars, more people, more dogs, there's more chance for issues. I see these people walking up and down my road, I see all, everything that goes on, on my road, I've seen it for twenty years. Now, I don't think the road is gonna get any better than it is today, the road itself that you're driving on. Um, so I really object to having five more houses there. There's already two more coming up, we know that. Five more would just put more and more people, cars, kids in the mix. And I don't think the road is up to it, and I don't think that you would want to live on a road like that with that kind of traffic going. So, you know, I'd like you to think, as I'm driving down Greenbrier, what do I do if I need a bus? Or, or the, um, propane truck, or the oil truck? There's not much room yet, I've been in the ditch more than I want to say. And if you, if you link the pen line truck, the big red thing that cuts the trees, forget it, you don't have a chance. They're not gonna let it all, so I feel like you are, it's not safe to have this anymore. So, um, I wanted to make sure you knew all of this before, so you can be informed. You don't know if it was on that road, we do. So you can be informed and know the traffic, what we see every day, and what our concern is. So I think you need to know this so you can make an informed and responsible decision. Would I like to see two new houses on those, where those ridgely old things are? Absolutely, I would be glad to see two nice new houses, and this plan sounds very good. I don't want a five-hundred-thousand-dollar house there, no. What they plan, I think is excellent, however, I don't want five of them, two of them, yes. Those lots are both zones, single-family residential, I think it's a disservice to the residents who've lived there. One house is done in nineteen-ten, the other in nineteen forty-six. They're old, they're falling down, they're from another town. But some of those people have lived on that road for twenty, thirty years. I've lived there for twenty, and I'm a relative newcomer. So I think that you need to consider the citizens and not just, you know, the income that you're gonna get from, when these houses are completed. We've been paying taxes for years, so I think that, you know, we should be considered as well. So, um, that's pretty much everything that I want to say, so I hope you'll consider it. I see a lot of new faces, so you don't really just view that room, but there's history there. So I'd like you to seriously consider leaving it at one house per, way zone now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate you giving your opinion.
And I also, one more thing I'm gonna say, I was really surprised that I didn't get a, a notice of this meeting. Um, it seems like the very first person on the street and the very last person on the street got a notice in the mail, in the mail.
No, I found out on Facebook that you guys were having a meeting, I didn't-
I think that it's important to let all the residents know, I mean, can't believe you couldn't just like, put a, put the notice of the hearing in the mailbox. So I'm surprised at that, 'cause as you see, there's only two people here.
There are requirements if we're having a public hearing, this did not require a public hearing.
When does it go to public hearing, does it go to-
Well, this, it, because they meet the criteria for a, the size of the lot, um, for residential, for subdivision regulations. Um, so, and they're not doing anything outside of the zoning, so that kind of dictates it. I think you're referring to many years ago, there was an, an outcry for a public hearing when the people at the end, further passed you, when, um, they wanted to subdivide that property, and they did a petition, and they're, they asked for a special public hearing. And, um, we did, since then, um, get, uh, our legal advice, and that really was not allowed. Uh, and they, those people were held to a different standard because they did meet the zoning criteria. But at the time, um, the council allowed for there to be a public hearing, and, um, that gentleman was limited on what he was able to do, and he, he's gone along with that, but it really was not, um, there was no legal reason for him not to be able to subdivide his property. So we have sought legal advice on it, and one of the things we did require that, because the county has the authority over that road, we do not. We can't issue a, a permit, so we did require that they go to the county, and we made sure that we, we do have a copy of their conversation with the county to make sure that they would allow additional driveways to be able to access that road.
Well, that sounds pretty sad, because if you've all gone down there and seen the road seriously, I mean, you think that's, that's good for five more houses? Actually, seven, because two are under construction right now, and it'll mean, really.
I'm the last house on Greenbrier Road, and as she was saying, the road, I'm always on the edge, I'm always in the ditch when there are two cars going down. It's not wide enough to have X amount of cars going on that road. It's not paved properly, it's, it's shoddy, it's not, down where I live, where the water comes down all the way from the top of everybody else's house, when I pull out of my driveway, I'm in a ditch. It's, it, the runoff goes all the way down the hill, and I get, we have those, those things that, you know, whatever. But even, I have a house next to me being constructed, and just from them digging up the road, our drainage isn't properly fixed from when they, when they had put in the stuff. But I agree, it's gonna be nice to see two nice houses, but it's not to have potentially five houses on that road with how skinny it is, with the amount of people that travel. I walk my boys up that road, and we have to get our phone to the shoulder, because there could be a trash truck coming, there could be a Metro Cast car coming, there could be the utility people coming from the county, and they don't care, they don't care, they don't move. They're, you know, they're riding on the, a little bit on the grass, but they're not, they're not gonna let a pedestrian go. There's kids that come up, there's a whole crew of kids that come up and go play soccer up at the, you know, up at the field, field next to the library. My biggest concern are my boys and being able to travel on that road, even driving, like not getting stuck in a ditch. Or, you know, my kids get hit by a car, if there's crap loaded cars, you know, coming back and forth on it. And then just, it's, the way that it is, it's not paved, it's, you know, they come, I think they came last year one time, they threw down that stuff, and then it's like, well, that's it. And then now you look at it, and where the water's running for a year, it's completely, it's fallen apart, the, you know, all of it's in the ditch.
It's also running underneath a car, so that just washes away, you know, the gravel on the side, and, um-
And we have people that just drive down that road because they think it's a shortcut to the place behind us, and I had a call-
And their GPS is wrong.
Yeah, and I had a call the county, and I had to get a sign out there that said, "No outlet, turn around." And now I have people pulling around my driveway, and it's, I mean, it's a busy road because people think that road connects, and to have more, you know, potentially five houses up there, don't get me wrong, it's gonna be nice to have the, you know, the, the older houses down, but I don't think that that road could handle five houses, the way that the road is, this, the, when you first come in Greenbrier, it's skinny, and it doesn't even widen that much, even when you get down to my house. So, and everybody either turn around at my house, or at your house, or all the way down to the bottom, so that's, that's my concern.
And every time, there is excavation anywhere in the world, but especially on Greenbrier Road, we all have a drainage problem. Right now, there's water in both ditches as we, as I came out today. When I came out today, there were three runners coming up the hill from Leonard's Grant, obviously there is some kind of practice. They weren't together, they were spaced far apart, this happens all the time.
Well, I think we're gonna have to cut the con- this discussion, sure, it's, this is not an open hearing, and we did let you have your say. I think a lot of what you were trying to talk about now is the road, and there's nothing we can do about the road here in the town.
But you can allow it to change, then that needs to change.
If you want to petition the county and get, make sure you have good signage on that road, that it is a dead-end road, and that there are children playing, you can get the slow children sign put, put up, but, uh-
It can be, so I've been looking on that road, two houses are going up right now. It, I wait fifteen minutes to get to my house, how long are they gonna be in and out, going through my street?
Well, but you're not the only person that has trouble and has to wait. I mean, all the traffic in the Lenter Town area is getting heavy, and we do wait, we wait in town a lot, everywhere. It's not, it's not just unique to you, but the area is going to grow, and we do need to have some smaller houses in the area. And, uh, I don't think we can solve your road problem.
No, you can't solve the road problem.
And they, they, they're, they have to meet all the requirements to keep the water contained on their properties, isn't that right?
Yeah.
That's correct.
So-
I, I will reach out to, um, the director of public works, I've met up there with the assistant director a couple of years ago. Um, but I will try to talk with him and have him come out and look at it and see if there's anything that can be done. Yeah, 'cause I mean, it's just, he's a reasonable man, I, I will ask him to come out and take a look at it.
They can't do anything, but we can, um, we're also owners of those properties, they not think just we converted it development. We will add your property, I would just tell them, you're in the property. We own the properties, so I don't have an obligation-
I thought you were a public works representative.
No, we, I, I don't have a public work-
Oh, okay, all right.
Um, I don't have any obligation, but I go visit Mr. Curtis every two weeks. You may not think we care about that community, I love that road, I love the kids that come down the road, and that they feel safe, we absolutely do. Uh, just because we own Mr. Curtis's house doesn't mean that my husband and I don't check in on him every two weeks, 'cause he's older than he lives alone. So we care about your road, and yes, it is very small, we can't even get our normal-sized truck to turn around. So what, us, we're together because it's a county road and not a city problem, to widen that road, because we're owners of, of a big stretch of that road, so we can do something about it, if we can. So I'm with, I'm good with you guys, 'cause Jada gave you the number of the gentleman who leads the charge of that road. So we can do something about it, maybe fill in those wicked ditches, uh, especially right there, Mr. Curtis's property, I don't know how it is going back.
It, it's at that level right now.
But, I mean, we can do something about it. I'm totally with that, for that, why not do what we can to do something about that road? 'Cause we have it, yeah. And like I said, I care about every, you know, everyone, the kids are walking, my uncle rents that house from us. We check in on Mr. Curtis every two weeks, I offered to adopt his dog because he had a shirt, uh, and the dog wasn't doing well. Um, my husband did not want to, but I was gonna take his dog.
You fed the dog, yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, we care about the road, we'll make-
Well, I appreciate that you are saying that and that you do, for five more houses, it just makes me very-
It's three more, we're gonna replace the two dilapidated, and it will be three more, but two in question today. We're, I'm all for it, I mean, let me help.
No, I appreciate that, it's very nice of you.
Okay, anybody else have any comments?
No, just as a reminder that we're here to address the permit for just three-lot, single-family subdivisions at this moment. When it, if it does come to that point, that'll be another issue entirely, and here, uh, they've met all the requirements as we stated, so, um, I think we're going to move along of this.
You want to continue with your motion?
Yes, so, for case number thirty-eight dash one-seven, the Woodsview subdivision, uh, the map one twenty-one, parcel twenty-three on Greenbrier Road, the request for three lot, single-family subdivisions, uh, make a motion for approval.
I second that motion.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Did you get a copy of the in-house permits?
No.
Okay. We didn't have a copy of any of the in-house permits to review, so, I'm sorry.
I will get those for you, because you have several months to review.
Well, you can add another month next.
Oh, I'll just email you, um, the list, that way you can look over them, and if you have any questions, then you can just reach out and, and let me know.
Okay.
Okay.
I have one question, um, where the town runoff is, you know, that sandbar keeps getting bigger. I was out on the water last weekend, I guess it was, I didn't see the, uh, boys around there, did they take those out? You know, Dan, have you, have you noticed?
They, they do.
Will they put them back?
Pardon, they'll, oh, yeah, no, they'll definitely put them, I guess, yes.
Oh, okay. Because it looks to me like it's bigger, wider or something, and that-
It's, it's just, I don't think it's really gotten any bigger, it's just whenever it's, look, it's, it's extremely low tide, you see more of it.
Yeah, right, okay, I was just concerned that they're gonna put those back.
Yeah, no, they'll, they'll definitely put them.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions they want to ask over here?
No, for me.
No, ma'am.
All right, then a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second?
I second it.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, okay.